Good morning, everyone. Thank you for attending the Connecticut Department of Transportation Public Hearing for the 2023 Bus and Rail Service and Fair Equity Analysis, also known as the SAFE analysis. My name is Dan Baker. I'm a Senior Transportation Planner with the Connecticut DOT Bureau of Public Transportation. I will be moderating today's virtual public hearing. Today's hearing will include a 28-minute presentation on the service and fair equity analysis and provide information on the proposed rail service and fare changes and the proposed bus service changes. Following the presentation, we will open up the hearing to comments from members of the public. You will be called by name if you have registered to speak during today's hearing. You will have three minutes to share your comments with the panelists. Panelists joining us this morning from the Connecticut Department of Transportation include Public Transportation Bureau Chief Benjamin Limer, Transit Administrator Lisa Rivers, and Assistant Rail Administrator Eric Bergeron. Spanish-speaking interpreters are available to assist any members of the public looking to provide comment during this virtual hearing. At this time, I will turn it over to Public Transportation Bureau Chief Benjamin Limer for opening remarks.
Thank you, Dan. And good morning, everyone. Thank you for taking time out of your busy schedules to attend this morning's public hearing on the proposed service and fare changes included in the Connecticut DOT's Service and Fair Equity Analysis, otherwise known as SAFE. Your attendance and input at the hearing are absolutely valued and critically important to making sure that we deliver a safe, accessible, and equitable public transportation system throughout the entire state. All comments received during today's public hearing and throughout the entire public comment period will be recorded and carefully reviewed as we finalize the proposed service and fare changes that will be included in the SAFE. As a little bit of background, in June of 2023, the Connecticut State Legislature adopted a biennial budget that was signed by the governor. This bipartisan budget included many things. It did include a record investment in bus service expansion. It also included some funding reductions for Metro North Railroad services in fiscal year '24, as well as Shoreline East services in fiscal years '24 and '25. With this funding, bus transportation is proposed to expand with new routes, longer hours, and dedicated connections to major employment hubs, downtown centers, as well as commercial areas. These proposals are based directly on customer feedback. These proposals also reflect incredibly strong ridership levels and increased demand of bus service in our state. What you'll hear details all of these enhancements, and I want you all to know that there are several other additional adjustments that did not meet the federal threshold to conduct a formal SAFE equity analysis, but all of those changes can be found on the CT DOT website. The Connecticut DOT team has been closely monitoring ridership patterns and data across all of the rail lines dating back to 2018, well before the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. Historical as well as current ridership levels were compared to service levels for each rail line to determine which lines would receive proposed service modifications. Since ridership has rebounded significantly on the Hartford Line and Waterbury Branch Line, those two lines are not included in the proposed service modifications. However, the analysis indicated that Shoreline East weekday services and Metro North services, specifically New Haven Line service on Friday, were not seeing the same recovery rate and therefore were identified for proposed service modifications. Our team has worked tirelessly with all of our rail service providers at Metro North, as well as Amtrak, to produce customized schedules that reflect current travel patterns as well as ridership levels. Those proposed rail schedules and service levels are included in the SAFE as well as detailed in the upcoming presentation. I do want to note that the presentation is pre-recorded. It's 28 minutes, as Mr. Baker mentioned. It goes over in detail any and all of the proposed modifications being asked and presented to the customer base on both the bus side as well as the rail side, and also details all of the proposed fare service modifications as well. So I ask you to be patient, sit tight, and with that, thank you for attending today's hearing and providing your feedback, and I'll hand it back to Dan.
Thank you, Ben. So the time is now 11:07 a.m. We'll begin the presentation.
Welcome to the Connecticut Department of Transportation Bus and Rail Service and Fair Equity Hearing. We will cover the following today: Virtual hearing information, Title VI and voluntary feedback survey, translations and hearing recordings, how to provide comments, service and fair equity, SAFE analysis overview, review proposed service and fare changes, review the service and fair equity analysis, next steps, hear public comments regarding the SAFE. During today's hearing, all participants will be muted until called upon to speak. Closed captioning is provided in real time on Zoom. An American Sign Language interpreter will be signing throughout the hearing. If you wish to provide testimony in American Sign Language and did not indicate this when you registered, please type your request in the QA box. You will be provided with instructions on how to provide your comment through American Sign Language. Please note that today's hearing is being recorded and all public comments will be part of the public record. The public comment portion of the hearing will follow this presentation. The Connecticut Department of Transportation is committed to ensuring that no person is excluded from participation, denied benefits, or otherwise subjected to discrimination under any program or activity on the basis of race, color, or national origin. Please visit our website at https://portal.ct.gov/dot/business/contract-compliance-titel-vi-page for more information on our Title VI programs and your rights under Title VI. We encourage you to complete the voluntary feedback survey. Survey information helps the department conduct the most inclusive and representative outreach possible. Survey responses are anonymous and will be used strictly to achieve this goal. The link to the survey can be accessed from the Zoom chat today, from the description field of the YouTube video posted after the hearing, and at www.ct.gov/dot-proposed-transit-changes. After the public hearings, a recording of the formal presentation will be posted to YouTube. Closed captioning, including non-English translation options, will be available. Please visit www.ct.gov/dot-proposed-transit-changes for links to live streams and recordings.
Después de las audiencias, se publicará en YouTube una grabación de la presentación formal. Habrá subtítulos disponibles, incluidas las opciones de traducción que no estén en inglés. Visite la página web para obtener enlaces a transmisiones en vivo y grabaciones. A W W W P O T G O V slash D O T slash proposed transit changes.
Comments regarding the proposed service and fare changes and service and fair equity analysis can be made in a variety of ways. One is by making a public statement during today's public hearing. To register, please visit www.ct.gov/dot-proposed-transit-changes. If you do not register, you will still be able to sign up to speak at the end of the presentation. Additional methods include submitting a comment via email at dot-proposed-transit-changes@ct.gov. You can comment by leaving a voicemail at 860-594-3612. You can comment by mail, sending your written comments to comments on proposed service and fare changes, Connecticut Department of Transportation, 2800 Berlin Turnpike, P O Box 317546, Newington, Connecticut, Or you may visit one of the following libraries and fill out a comment form. The libraries include Waterbury's Silas Bronson Library, New Haven Free Public Library, the Public Library of New London, Hartford Public Library, Park Street Branch, and Bridgeport Public Library. Comments will be accepted until 11:59 p.m. on October 6, 2023. The Service and Fair Equity Analysis presentation will now begin. In accordance with the Federal Transit Administration, or FTA, circular 4702.1B, the department is required to conduct a service and fair equity analysis, also known as the SAFE, of proposed fare changes and major service changes to determine if the changes will have a disparate impact on minority customers or disproportionate burden on low-income customers. This analysis is also required for temporary major service changes that have continued beyond 12 months and temporary fare changes beyond six months. This is the process we will follow for the service and fair equity analysis. We are in the public hearing stage. The public comment period for the SAFE began on September 18, 2023, with the release of the draft SAFE document and will conclude on October 6, 2023. Following conclusion of the comment period, all public comments will be considered by the department in the finalization of the SAFE analysis. The department's FTA Title VI program for fiscal year 2021 through 2023 defines a major service change as any service change meeting at least one of the following criteria: Route restructuring actions resulting in at least a 20% change in overall route length; service frequency changes that result in a 25% or more change in annual revenue vehicle miles (RVM). Annual RVMs are a compilation of weekday and weekend RVMs; a service change adding or reducing service to a fixed guideway station resulting in a greater than 25% change in a service at the station; service change actions resulting in at least a one-hour change in service span. There are other bus service changes currently proposed throughout the state that are not included in this SAFE analysis. Per FTA guidance, an equity analysis is only required for proposed bus changes in the CT Transit Hartford and New Haven divisions, as those divisions operate 50 or more fixed route vehicles during peak service. All major service changes are analyzed to determine whether the proposed changes will have a disparate impact or produce a disproportionate burden. Disparate impact refers to the facially neutral policy or practice that disproportionately affects members of a group identified by race, color, or national origin. Disproportionate burden refers to a facially neutral policy or practice that disproportionately affects low-income populations. The table on the screen shows rail ridership trends compared to service levels on all rail lines in the state of Connecticut from 2019 to present day. The row titled "2021% of 2019 Service" shows both the percent of service in 2021 compared to 2019 and the percent of ridership in 2021 compared to 2019. As you can see, service was reduced on all rail lines except Waterbury Line following the onset of the pandemic in March 2020. The row titled "2023% of 2019 Service" shows how ridership service levels in 2023 compares to 2019. The row titled "2024 Overall Budget as a Percent of 2019 Service" shows the approved percent of funding received of total funding required to operate service at 2019 levels. The row titled "2024 Weekday Proposed Percent of 2023 Service" shows a level of service for each rail line being proposed in the SAFE analysis compared to the 2023 schedule. The final row of this table shows where each rail line currently stands in terms of ridership compared to 2019 ridership data. The Connecticut Department of Transportation and its service providers actively monitored ridership levels as service levels were scaled up between 2021 and 2023. Ridership recovery rate was utilized to help identify proposed rail service changes included in the SAFE analysis. The following rail service changes are proposed. On the New Haven Line, Monday through Thursday, service is proposed to be reduced from 239 to 237 trains per day. Friday service is proposed to be reduced from 241 to 233 trains per day. On the New Canaan Line, weekday service is proposed to be reduced from 41 to 39 trains per day. On the Danbury Line, weekday service is proposed to be reduced from 28 to 26 trains per day. On the Shoreline East, weekday service is proposed to be reduced from 23 to 16 trains per day. Proposed service changes on the New Haven Line include proposed suspensions Monday through Thursday on p.m. peak eastbound train 1464, which departs Grand Central Terminal at 5:55 p.m. Customers will have the option of train 1562, which departs Grand Central Terminal at 5:46 p.m. p.m. off-peak westbound train 1585, which departs New Haven at 6:20. Customers will have the option of train 1583, which departs New Haven at 5:34 p.m. or train 1587, which departs New Haven at 6:44 p.m. Proposed Friday-only suspensions include a.m. peak westbound train 1417, which departs South Norwalk at 6:46 a.m. and a.m. peak westbound train 1419, which departs Bridgeport at 6:28 a.m. Customers will have the option of new train 3419, which departs Bridgeport at 6:21 a.m. and departs South Norwalk at 6:51 a.m. a.m. peak westbound train 1427, which departs Bridgeport at 6:57 a.m. Customers will have the option of train 1525, which departs Bridgeport at 6:42 a.m. or train 1529, which departs Bridgeport at 7:12 a.m. Additional proposed Friday-only suspensions on the New Haven Line include a.m. peak westbound train 1437, which departs South Norwalk at 8:26 a.m. and a.m. peak westbound train 1537, which departs New Haven at 7:42 a.m. Customers will have the option of new train 3539, which departs South Norwalk at 8:32 a.m. and departs New Haven at 7:39 a.m. a.m. peak westbound train 1539, which departs New Haven at 7:55 a.m. Customers will have the option of train 3539, which departs New Haven at 7:39 a.m. or new Super Express train 3541, which departs New Haven at 8:24 a.m. p.m. peak eastbound train 1560, which departs Grand Central at 5:41 p.m. Customers will also have the option of train 1562, which departs Grand Central at 5:46 p.m. p.m. peak eastbound train 1568, which departs Grand Central at 6:07 p.m. and p.m. peak eastbound train 1470, which departs Grand Central at 6:12 p.m. Customers will have the option of new train 3570, which departs Grand Central at 6:12 p.m. Additional proposed Friday-only suspensions on the New Haven Line include p.m. peak eastbound train 1572, which departs Grand Central at 6:44 p.m. Customers will have the option of train 1570, which departs Grand Central at 6:31 p.m. or train 1573, which departs Grand Central at 6:53 p.m. p.m. peak eastbound train 1568, which departs Grand Central at 6:07 p.m. and p.m. peak eastbound train 1470, which departs Grand Central at 6:12 p.m. Customers will have the option of new train 3570, which departs Grand Central at 6:12 p.m. Proposed service changes on the New Canaan Line include proposed weekday suspensions midday on northbound train 1722, which departs Stamford at 12:01 p.m. and arrives in New Canaan at 12:19 p.m. Customers will have the option of train 1718, which departs Stamford at 11:01 a.m. or train 1726, which departs Stamford at 1:01 p.m. southbound train 1759, which departs New Canaan at 12:29 p.m. and arrives in Stamford at 12:46 p.m. Customers will have the option of train 1755, which departs New Canaan at 11:29 a.m. or train 1763, which departs New Canaan at 1:29 p.m. Proposed service changes on the Danbury Line include proposed weekday suspensions p.m. off-peak on southbound train 1895, which departs Danbury at 9:17 p.m. and arrives in South Norwalk at 10:15 p.m. Customers will have the option of train 1889, which departs Danbury at 6:47 p.m. or train 1897, which departs Danbury at 10:32 p.m. northbound train 1890, which departs South Norwalk at 11:17 p.m. and arrives in Danbury at 12:08 a.m. Customers will have the option of train 1882, which departs South Norwalk at 9:10 p.m. or train 1894, which departs South Norwalk at 12:35 a.m. The proposed Shoreline East weekday service changes are shown on the screen. Westbound a.m. trains proposed for suspension include trains 1627, 1645, and 1649. Westbound p.m. trains proposed for suspension include trains 1673, 1685, 1693, and 1699. One eastbound a.m. train is proposed for suspension, train 1604. Eastbound p.m. trains proposed for suspension include trains 1618, 1638, and 1646. Proposed service changes on the New Haven Line, New Canaan Line, and Danbury Line did not trigger the major service change threshold and no analysis was needed. Shoreline East schedule changes did, however, exceed the major service change threshold with a 30.4% decrease in Monday through Friday service observed in the proposed schedule. Analysis was performed on the scheduled changes, and there were no findings of disparate impact or disproportionate burden on Shoreline East. Proposed rail fare changes include an approximate 4.5% increase for Metro North fares in Connecticut, Shoreline East fares, and Hartford Line fares, excluding monthly school passes. This is an approximate value, as the average change in fare varies by origin/destination, as well as the pass used. Fares are also rounded to 25 cent increments. This increase aligns with a recently implemented 4.5% increase by the MTA for commuter railroad fares in New York. This is the first Metro North fare increase in the state of Connecticut since January 2018, and Shoreline East fares have not increased since November 2016. Hartford Line fares have not increased since the launch of the service. Lastly, there were no findings of disparate impact or disproportionate burden in the proposed rail fare changes. This slide demonstrates a sample of the change in fares by line, the impact to customers following the approximate 4.5% increase for Metro North Railroad ranges from 50 cents to $1 for one-way peak trips and $9 to $18 for monthly tickets. The impact to customers following the approximate 4.5% increase for Shoreline East ranges from 25 to 50 cents for one-way trips and $5.25 to $10.50 for monthly tickets. Finally, the impact to customers following the approximate 4.5% increase for Hartford Line ranges from 25 to 50 cents for one-way trips in Connecticut to $5.25 to $10.50 for monthly tickets within Connecticut. This slide demonstrates what Metro North Railroad customers traveling to Grand Central from Stamford or New Haven could expect to pay. For example, a one-way ticket between Stamford and Grand Central is increasing from $15.25 to $16. For additional context, we're showing what it may cost to travel between Connecticut's urban areas like New Haven and Bridgeport. Likewise, this slide demonstrates what Shoreline East users traveling end-to-end could expect to pay. For example, a one-way ticket between New London and New Haven is increasing from 10:25 to 10:75. We also show what an intermediate station to New Haven fare will look like. Lastly, we're showing what it may cost for intermediate travel, like Branford to Old Saybrook. Finally, this slide demonstrates what CT Rail Hartford Line customers would expect to pay. For example, a one-way ticket between Hartford and New Haven is increasing from $8 to $8.25. We include other station pairs, such as Meriden to New Haven and Berlin to Springfield for additional context. For more details on the proposed train schedules and fare tables, please visit the department's webpage at www.ct.gov/dot-proposed-transit-changes. Proposed bus service changes seek to better align the bus system with ridership demand, promote efficiency, and make these routes more convenient and easier to use. Several types of bus service changes are proposed. They include adjustments to increase service frequency on two CT Fast Track routes, decreasing frequency on the Dash Shuttle, restructuring CT Transit Route 69 and CT Fast Track Route 102, discontinuing five routes and replacing them with new or existing CT Fast Track routes, adding three new bus routes, two in New Haven and one in Hartford. Three new bus routes are proposed. In New Haven, CT Transit Route 216 is a new bus route that would operate between New Haven and Meriden. CT Transit Route 262 is a new bus route that would operate between New Haven and Milford. In Hartford, CT Fast Track Route 125 is a new bus route that would operate between Hartford and the Berlin Turnpike. It replaces four existing routes: Route 45X, 47B, 907, and the Dash Shuttle service from Monday to Wednesday. The benefits of this route include extended hours of operation, a simplified consistent schedule, and service to more destinations along the Berlin Turnpike compared to the existing routes that it will replace. In terms of travel time, it will be comparable to Route 47B and 10 minutes less than Route 69. For former Route 907 customers, their fare will be lower, since Route 125 will charge local fares instead of express bus fares. In addition, changes are being proposed to 10 other CT Transit and CT Fast Track routes. These types of proposed service changes include increasing service frequency. For Fast Track Routes 144 and 153 on weekdays, the time interval between buses would be reduced from every 60 minutes to every 40 minutes. Also, CT Fast Track Route 153 would be rerouted via Albany Avenue and Bloomfield Avenue to restore service to the University Hartford campus. Decreasing service frequency. The Dash Shuttle would change from a Monday-through-Friday schedule to a Thursday-through-Sunday schedule, 8 a.m. to 10 p.m. Route restructuring. CT Transit Route 69 would be rerouted and end at Newington B.A. Hospital. Service to Willard Avenue and Berlin Turnpike would be replaced by the proposed CT Fast Track Route 125. CT Fast Track Route 102, Hartford, New Britain, Bristol, would have all of its trips rerouted to create two-way service to Forestville Commons. No change to the current level of service is proposed. Route elimination. It is proposed to discontinue CT Transit Route 45X Berlin Flyer and replace it with a new CT Fast Track Route 125. CT Transit Route 47B Berlin Turnpike is proposed to be discontinued. Service on Prospect Street in Weathersfield would be provided by CT Route 61 and on the Berlin Turnpike by the new proposed CT Fast Track Route 125. It is proposed to discontinue CT Fast Track Route 140 CCSU Connector because of low ridership. Alternate services linking Central Connecticut State University campus and multiple CT Fast Track stations include Routes 128, 144, and 507. CT Transit Route 907 Newington Express would be discontinued and replaced with the proposed CT Fast Track Route 125 between Newington Park and Ride and downtown Hartford on weekdays. It is proposed to discontinue CT Transit Route 923 Bristol Express. CT Fast Track Route 102 would be a replacement, as it provides a similar geographic coverage. Thirteen routes have proposed service changes. The changes for 11 bus routes triggered CT DOT's major service change threshold. These 11 routes were evaluated for any impacts to minority and low-income populations. For more details on the proposed bus route changes, please visit the department's webpage at www.ct.gov/dot-proposed-transit-changes. The analysis found the proposed change to Express Route 907 resulted in a disparate impact to minority populations. This is because the route serves an area with a higher concentration of minorities and is proposed to be eliminated. This is because the route serves an area with a higher concentration of minorities and is proposed to be eliminated. To address this impact, the new CT Fast Track Route 125 would replace express Route 907, offering increased frequency and local fares instead of express fares. Also, the changes to the Dash Shuttle plan of service resulted in both a disparate impact to minority populations and a disproportionate burden to low-income populations. This is because of the change in days when the Dash Shuttle will operate and the demographics of the population served by the route. To address this impact, from Monday to Wednesday, the new CT Fast Track Route 125 would replace the Dash Shuttle service. There were no impacts associated with the other routes analyzed. Following a 12-month suspension of bus fares during 2022, fare collection resumed in spring 2023. Per federal guidance, the resumption of fares required a fare equity analysis. Upon conducting the analysis, CT DOT determined there were no findings of disparate impact or disproportionate burden as a result of reinstituting fares. After all of the hearings have taken place and the comment period has closed, the department will review and consider all comments received and make changes to address those comments if needed. Comments and any changes will be included in the final SAFE analysis. Once the final SAFE analysis is completed, a recommendation will go to the DOT Commissioner for review and approval. Proposed rail service and fare changes, if approved, would take effect as follows. For Metro North, rail service changes would take effect on October 29, 2023. For Shoreline East, rail service changes would take effect in late 2023. An exact date is being determined. Metro North and CT rail fare increases would take effect November 1, 2023. Bus service changes, if approved, would take effect on March 10, 2024. Changes to CT Fast Track 102 would go into effect November 5, 2023. Communication to our customers will continue, and final rail and bus schedules will be shared before any changes take place. Four public hearings are scheduled to receive public comments on the draft SAFE and proposed changes. These include two in-person hearings and two virtual hearings. In-person hearings will be held on Monday, October 2, 2023, in New Haven at the Kennedy Mitchell Hall of Records from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM with open house from 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Tuesday, October 3, 2023, in Hartford at the Capital Region Council of Governments office from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM with an open house from 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Virtual hearings via Zoom will be held on Wednesday, October 4, 2023, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM and from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Department staff will also be at Stanford Transportation Center in the main concourse/waiting area on Thursday, October 5, 2023, from 3:30 to 7:00 PM with information regarding this service and fare equity analysis. As mentioned earlier, comments regarding the proposed service and fare changes in service and fare equity analysis will be accepted until 11:59 PM on October 6, 2023 in a variety of ways. You can register to speak at a hearing. You may submit comment via email at dotproposedchanges@ct.gov. You may also leave a comment via voicemail by calling 860-594-3612. Written comments can be mailed to comments on proposed service and fare changes. Connecticut Department of Transportation, 2800 Berlin Turnpike, PO Box 317546, Newington, Connecticut, 06131-7546. Finally, a copy of the draft SAFE analysis and comment form can be found at the following public libraries: Waterbury's Silas Bronson Library, New Haven Free Public Library, the Public Library of New London, Hartford Public Library, Park Street Branch, and Bridgeport Public Library. We would like to remind you about the brief voluntary feedback survey. Survey responses are anonymous. Your input is very important to us and helps us conduct the most inclusive and representative outreach possible. The link to the survey can be accessed at the bottom of the SAFE webpage We will now begin to hear public comments. We ask that you please limit your comments today to the service and fare equity SAFE analysis and the proposed service and fare changes. Speakers who have pre-registered to comment will be called upon by name. If you would like to provide a comment but have not pre-registered to speak, please submit a request to comment in the Q&amp;A tab. Then, please wait for your name to be called when we finish calling pre-registered speakers after the presentation. In the interest of providing all speakers the opportunity to speak on the record, comments are limited to three minutes. Please note that no questions will be answered by the moderator or any of the panelists during the hearing or comments portion of the meeting. All comments made during the meeting will be recorded and transcribed for the record. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We will now begin the public comment period of today's hearing. It is 11:36 AM. We have 13 individuals registered to speak this morning, one elected official and 12 members of the public. So we are going to start with Representative Christine Conley. Please raise your hand on the Zoom feature just to let us know that you're here, and we will unmute you.
I think we're unmuted?
Yes.
Okay, I'm here with Rep. Anthony Nolan as well. And we are here for our strong non-support or dislike in this plan. We think cutting the services to Shoreline East will be detrimental to our residents who commute from New Haven to New London and back for work. And we think that this cut of almost 25% of trains is not beneficial to our growing economy. We're currently at a press conference about more growth in our economy, and we think that what the DOT is proposing is halting that. And so we would like the train service to be restored.
Thank you, Representative Conley and Representative Nolan. Appreciate you attending this morning's hearing.
Thank you.
The next individual that we have registered to provide comment is Mark Schechter. Mark Schechter, if you could raise your hand to let us know you're here. All right, you are unmuted.
Hi, thank you for giving me the moment to make a comment. My family moved to Fairfield County last year in part because of the reliability of the New Haven Line for access to New York City. We are regular users of the railroad, and we are greatly disappointed about the prospect of reduced service. Traffic in Fairfield County is terrible. Road construction doesn't abate, but road capacity is not increasing even as the population picks up. Reduction in train service is a net reduction in transportation infrastructure. It will make the roads more crowded, especially this large Friday service reduction, which is a day when the roads are already packed in the region. I don't want to see more roads built, but I want to see more people taking the train. The statistics you show show that ridership is down, but traffic is worse than ever. It seems a perfect formula for getting more people on the train, but you need to provide better, faster, and more reliable service and actively market it to get people on the train. I recognize that the heart of the issue is funding. My first thought is that I pay my taxes, and DOT should be able to find the money to run the trains. But I have another idea. Congestion pricing in New York City begins next year. It will greatly increase the cost of driving into New York City for Connecticut residents. The goal of congestion pricing is to encourage people to not drive their cars into New York. But how do I get to New York? I take the train. If you're reducing service just as congestion pricing is beginning, it makes no sense. It's incongruous. News reports say that New York City's proposed congestion pricing program will raise $1 billion annually for the MTA to make transit improvements. But some of that money will be paid by the Connecticut drivers, and that money should be funneled to transit improvements so that Connecticut residents have good alternatives to get to New York so they don't have to pay the congestion pricing toll. That alternative is the New Haven Line. Why is Connecticut not working to get some of that money to not only keep current service levels but to improve them? It's disappointing that Connecticut, that the DOT held no in-person meetings in Fairfield County where the vast majority of riders affected by the service changes live. It smacks as a total disregard to the users to avoid a spectacle of people voicing their opinions. Indeed, Mr. Limer said here that the budget is already fixed to provide the lower service levels. If enough people made a lot of noise, you'd actually have to do something. I note on your presentation, you note that Train 1585 on the New Haven Line, PM inbound train, is going to be canceled. I ride that train regularly. It's a train that gets to New York at 8:30 in the evening, and it's the perfect train for many people who want to be in New York in the evening. I can't understand, and that train is crowded. I can't understand how that train is one of the trains that's going to be canceled. Further, you've completely gutted Friday service such that, okay, commuter levels are low. No one's ever going to commute again at those service levels. So this is a terribly misguided plan. And again, given that congestion pricing in New York is starting soon, it just makes absolutely no sense.
Mark, thank you for your comments and for attending this morning's hearing. I do want to highlight, we will have staff out at Stanford Transportation Center tomorrow afternoon between 3:30 and 7:00 PM. We'll have more info on the SAFE, be there to have, you know, answer questions and comments from the public and point people to more information to provide comment before the end of the comment period on October 6. Thank you. The next individual registered to speak is Cynthia Wang. Cynthia, could you please raise your hand to let us know you're here? Okay, I'm not seeing Cynthia's in the attendee list, so we will move on to the next registered speakers. We will circle back to individuals if you were not present when we called your name. So the next individual registered to speak is Loretta Selis. Thank you, Loretta. You are unmuted.
Thank you. I am a layperson who's not knowledgeable about the specific variables and formulas used to calculate and determine decisions about transportation services and fares. But from an outside perspective, I want to say that looking at ridership figures in a four-year period that includes an unprecedented event, just the COVID pandemic, is poorly supported and myopic. The previous commenter said, and I share this belief, that in, at a high level and in the long term, we should be shifting our resources to improving rail infrastructure and encouraging public use of rail, not discouraging it, even if it does not make immediate economic sense. These changes are being framed as a reaction to reduced ridership. Whether that's true or not, I believe that coupling service reduction with fare increases is equivalent to an active reduction to ridership. I don't support these changes as a whole to rail service and changes, but especially I don't support reduction in rail service with fare increases. Thank you.
Thank you, Loretta. We appreciate you attending this morning's hearing. And I just want to know, if anybody that we call is on the phone, we ask them to press *9 to raise your hand when we call your name, and then you'll press *6 when prompted to unmute. So I just want to call the previous individual Cynthia Yang and just to see if you are on the phone right now. All right, I'm not seeing Cynthia. So we will move on to the next individual registered to provide comment this morning, Anne Igglebrink. Can you please raise your hand to let us know you're here? Is Anne Igglebrink in attendance this morning? Not seeing Anne, so we will move on to the next registered speakers, Jim Gildea. Thanks, Jim. You're unmuted.
All right, how are you doing today?
Good. How are you?
Good. I would like to, for today's purposes, keep my comments centered on the Shoreline East. As one of the previous callers said, I realize that the Zoom option is certainly an effective way in which to communicate. However, I do think changes to this magnitude would have called for us to actually have a line or have a discussion on the line that has impacted the most. So that's the first comment. Secondly, I would just say that I find it unfortunate that we are cutting service to this degree on the Shoreline East. Each of the reasons mentioned for me just don't seem to ring true. We talk about ridership statistics, but yet the Danbury Line, the Waterbury Line, the Hartford Line, and the New Haven Line, for all intents and purposes, were brought back to 100% service, thereby allowing them to gain ridership and to gain a critical frequency of service. I think any public transportation person will tell you frequent service builds ridership. Shoreline East never got that coming out of COVID. They were always kept below. So I do think the logic was that ridership isn't there, and ridership was there because unlike the Hartford Line or the Waterbury Line that got a 44% increase in service, we did not give that line the ability to get back its riders. Two, there's some mythical belief that we need to change the zoning up that way. And I think ultimately, that's what this is all about. It's about forcing zoning up along the Shoreline East to get more housing closer to the tracks. What I mean about some mythical belief that that's going to be the magic elixir is developers are simply not going to want to build and invest in communities where the rail line has been gutted. And make no mistake about it, that is exactly what we're doing, gutted. I do feel unfortunately for the Department of Transportation that this edict comes from much higher than you, and I feel that you guys are just doing a job that you've been told to do and trying to live within a budget that you've been given. So I do think that, I believe that we need to work with the governor's office and the legislators who come on here and bemoan the service cuts for a budget that they passed. So I think that's an issue for me as well. So any way you cut it, whether it be this is bad for the environment, it's bad for the communities, it will work to the detriment of zoning in those areas, and it will destroy and devastate the line. I would implore the powers that be, the legislature and the governor's office, to find a way to fund the line and find a way to let the Department of Transportation and those professionals who want to run service, make no mistake about it, they want to run service, allow them the ability to do their jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. We appreciate you attending this morning's hearing. And, you know, we do want to point out that we did hold a public hearing in person in New Haven on Monday evening and had many Shoreline East advocates and riders attend that hearing to provide comment to the department in person. So thank you again for your time this morning.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So the next individual we have registered to speak is Tim Sperry. Tim, can you please raise your hand, and we will unmute you? Great, you're unmuted, Tim.
Great. Well, quite an honor to follow my friend Jim Gildea. I certainly want to second all of Jim's comments. I am a Shoreline East area resident and would like to be a more frequent user of the train. I'm not, I'm no longer working, so I don't have an office that I need to go to, but there's still plenty of things that we who live along the eastern shoreline would like to be able to do and would like to do it without our cars. I want to second Jim's comments. I know you guys are hamstrung. You have a Um, I, I want to second Jim's comments. I know you guys are hamstrung. You have a budget. You've got to work within the budget. You have to try and make it work, but, um, and what we're missing, we, we're lacking a vision for rail here in Connecticut and quite frankly, in the United States. Um, and we need to put that back into the equation. What do we want our rail systems to do? And let's build a schedule around what it does. So, um, the governor has chosen to ignore the railroads, the rail needs of the eastern Connecticut shoreline. Um, and that's quite disappointing. He has also been abetted by Amtrak. Amtrak has just put in with their construction schedule, um, a killer to Shoreline East for the next four months. And their intransigence and their unwillingness to work with anybody on creating alternate means of getting customers along Shoreline East to their various destinations is just unheard of. This isn't the first time that Amtrak has caused uh, problems with Shoreline East. In 2018, we had, uh, the bus service because there were so many closures on the line. Then we had COVID. And then we had a year where we only brought the line back to a certain level, and now we have Amtrak closing it again. So, um, we're never going to build service on Shoreline East if we keep on doing these kinds of things. So, um, again, I appreciate what you guys are held with, but, um, we need to build this rail to make it work, not just simply to, um, cut here and there. It's, it's, it's unheard of. So I'm going to stop now. Most of my comments have already, other thoughts have already been raised. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. We appreciate you attending this morning's hearing and providing your comment to the department. The next individual registered to speak this morning is Nick Miller. Nick, if you're on the line, could you please raise your hand on Zoom and we will unmute you? And Nick, if you're on the phone, uh, please press star nine to raise your hand and then press star six when prompted to unmute. Okay, not seeing Nick Miller at this time. So we will move on to the next, uh, list of people who are registered to speak. Carly Kramer. Carly, could you please raise your hand on Zoom and we will unmute you? You are unmuted, Carly.
Hello, uh, I am Carly Kramer. I am speaking as a user of the train and also an urban planner in Norwalk, Connecticut. I, uh, frequently use the train to commute from, uh, Fairfield Metro Station to South Norwalk. I'm on a hybrid schedule for work, so I'm not using it during typical nine to five, you know, peak hour commuting times. And I also use it many times to go into the city after work um, for recreational activities and entertainment, and also to other destinations along the New Haven line within Connecticut. I used it this past weekend to go to the Bridgeport Sound On Sound Music Festival, which it was packed. So, you know, when we're talking about, uh, you know, catering service around, uh, commuters, a lot of times we're forgetting about the other users of the train who are using this for daily needs to visit friends and family, to go to restaurants and frequent the businesses in Fairfield County. Um, in addition to that, reducing rail service on, uh, the busiest line in America, really, the Northeast Corridor, uh, is not encouraging, um, you know, uh, transit ridership. It's discouraging it. Ninety-five and the merit have been an absolute mess, especially since school has resumed. Uh, so the effort should be to encourage people to use the train, not to discourage it and removing that service. Um, and the infrequency of service will uh, diminish the amount of people who can easily ride the train. They'll opt to take uh, their car instead, which is not good for the environment, for traffic, and, uh, you know, there's still people that need to take their car. Um, you know, their, their commutes don't align with where transit is, um, and we're making it harder for them, for people that can be taking the train to now push them back onto the roads. Um, and so a decrease in, uh, reliability and frequency and in overall transit, uh, is, is not in alignment with in addition, raising prices of the train. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Carly. We appreciate you attending, uh, today's virtual hearing and providing your comment to the department. The next individual registered to speak this morning is Karen Mainz. Karen, can you please raise your hand? And we'll unmute you. You are unmuted, Karen.
Thank you. Um, I'm also here to talk about Shoreline East. Uh, I have a daughter who attends the regional vocational agriculture school, and her assigned school is, uh, the Sound School in New Haven. And we live in Old Sabre. And so every morning, her and three other children, uh, get on the Shoreline East. It's like the six fifty train to go into New Haven. She cannot drive. I mean, she drives, but we don't have an extra car for her. So Shoreline East is all these kids' only form of transportation unless a parent goes from Old Sabre or Old Lime and drives all the way down there and picks them up, which we frequently are going to have to do. The new schedule has no train available in the middle of the day. So if they have an early dismissal, the parents are going to have to, one of the parents are going to have to drive all the way in and all the way back, which is a nightmare, because, you know, right now, every time you go, you don't know what ninety-five is going to be. And this isn't something that, uh, she can just change and say, oh, traffic's rough right now, so I'm going to go to a different school. This was a competitive school for her to get into, and it's important to her, her high school experience and important to what college she'll get into. Um, so right now, we've been trying to come up with, you know, ways that we can carpool, but when all these parents work and have jobs, uh, it's, it's really difficult. And the fact that our kids right now, uh, get the six fifty train and, um, with the train schedule home, they don't get home till almost five o'clock, shows you how passionate these kids are about their education. And I, I just hate the fact that now these kids are, who are very independent, are going to become dependent on their parents to come pick them up instead of becoming kids who can embrace public transportation to get the education that they need. And you'll notice if you look at the proposed schedule, the middle of the day is nothing. So on days they have early dismissal, they can either wait, uh, two hours for a train or have their parents pick them up, which is difficult. And also as a citizen of Old Sabre, I want to comment that, you know, Monday, my daughter and I are there off for Indigenous People Day. We're going to go into New York City for, um, entertainment purposes, and we rely that on that. I, I wouldn't go if I had to drive into New York City. It's a nightmare. And anytime you're cutting it, you're cutting the options of people who've chosen to live here because they love here, but they like the easy access to New York City. That, that's going away. And we also have friends who moved here from New York City. They each have to go into the city several times a week, and any changes are going to be detrimental to that. So that's my statement. I didn't check my time, but for God's sake, don't make me drive to and from New Haven twice a day to get my kid to and from school.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate you calling in today to the virtual hearing and providing your comment. The next individual we have registered to speak is Brenda Holman. Brenda, could you please raise your hand? I am not seeing Brenda Holman on the attendee list, so we are going to move to the next individual registered, Daniel Riker. You are unmuted, Daniel.
Hi there. Um, thank you for having this hearing today. I'm also here to comment on Shoreline East. I, um, live in Branford. I don't have a vehicle, uh, so I was taking the train to and from work. I have a nine to five job in New Haven. Um, with the new proposed schedule, my choices to get to my job will be seven forty AM or nine thirty-eight AM. Uh, so that doesn't really work at all for, uh, me and the other nine to five commuters who are taking that train. I can't remember what the number was, but the one that arrived at State Street at, you know, eight thirty AM. Uh, so if anything, reinforcing the commuter hours, you know, I also definitely respect, you know, the need for midday trains uh, for kids going to and from school and stuff, but that, that commuter hour, that train to get people in to New Haven for a nine o'clock AM start time is really important. Uh, so some, uh, attention to that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Daniel, we appreciate you calling in to today's virtual hearing and providing your comment. So we have no more pre-registered speakers. We are going to circle back and call, uh, the following names that, uh, were on the list as pre-registered, but were not, uh, on the call earlier. So we'll go to Cynthia Wang. If you are on the call, please raise your hand. Okay, not seeing Cynthia here. The next individual that was pre-registered, um, Anne Iglebrink. Please raise your hand on Zoom if you are in attendance, Anne. Not seeing Anne, so we will move on to Nick Miller. Nick, you are unmuted.
Hi, how are you? So I live in Lebanon, and of course, here we have nothing. So my question is, I think with the MA, that gives more options since it's electric bike. So why not, you know, maybe look into bringing Shoreline East up this way to like Norwich? You know, instead of having to go to New London or Old Sabre. And also I agree with Speaker, ninety-five is terrible. We all know that. My dad used to be a trucker, so. So, you know, why not sort of see about maybe added service on Friday afternoon from Grand Central back this way? Is anyone, is? Am I making any sort of sense to you?
So Nick, today's public hearing is primarily on, on comments relating to the service and fair equity analysis and proposed changes. We, we do encourage you to submit comments via email with recommendations, but the purpose of today's hearing is for members of the public to provide testimony regarding the proposed service and fair changes in the safe analysis. We do, we appreciate you, you calling in. And we will be including additional information on the screen shortly with how to provide your comments and recommendations to the department.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, the last individual that was pre-registered and was not on the line when we called earlier is Brenda Holman. Is Brenda Holman on the line? If you are, please raise your hand on Zoom and we will unmute you. All right, so at this time, we have no new members of the public registered to provide comment. We are going to pause this hearing at twelve oh five PM. We will stay on the call until one PM, and we will monitor the chat if any new individuals join and ask to register to provide their public comment. So as of twelve oh five PM, this hearing is paused. We really appreciate everyone's time this morning to call in. Thank you. Twelve twenty PM. Good afternoon. We are reopening the hearing at twelve twenty PM. We have one new member of the public who would like to provide comment to the department. So please, uh, you are listed as a guest, but please raise your hand and we will unmute you to speak. Great, you are unmuted. Please provide your name.
Yes, hello. Uh, my name is Cecilia Caride of Windsor, Connecticut. Um, so I wanted, um, also add to the comments against the rail service reductions. I live in Windsor and my daily commute is on the Hartford Line, so I'm not, my daily commute is not directly affected by these reductions, but it would affect my ability to get around the, the state and the, the region and explore outside my, you know, commute to work. Um, I, I have actually noticed on the Hartford Line that the Fridays at the New Haven Station are crowded to the point where I've thought Amtrak should, you know, add an extra car or two to some of those trains. And so it's very surprising to see a reduction where I would have thought of anything we needed an increase. Because certainly, that's the Hartford Line, but certainly some of those people are transferring to the lines that are now being reduced. Um, I personally don't drive. I don't own a car at all. I moved. I got a job here in Connecticut and moved here from Michigan partly because I thought that, um, living without a car would be feasible here. I think it's something that we need to be enabling more of in this age of climate change. Um, and so, yeah, I think this is sadly a step backwards. Um, and finally, I agree with the other commenter who said that responding to reduced ridership by cutting service and making the train less attractive is going to, you know, lead to more reduced ridership and just keep spiraling down. Um, so thank you for allowing me to, um, make this comment today.
Thank you for attending today's hearing and providing your comments. We do have a number of other guests on the line still on the attendee list, uh, so we do want to make note, if you would like to provide comment, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. And we can unmute you if you would like to provide comment to the department today. I will wait thirty more seconds before we pause the hearing again, just to see if anyone who's on the line would like to provide comment. Okay, looking at the attendee list, I am not seeing any hands raised. So the time is twelve twenty-four PM. We will pause the hearing. We will be on here until one PM and we'll monitor the chat if any new members of the public join. We are now reopening the hearing at twelve fifty-nine PM. We have been monitoring the chat and attendee list, and no new members of the public have signed on, uh, this afternoon to provide comment. Uh, just want to remind those individuals still on the line, the public comment period is open until October sixth at eleven fifty-nine PM. Please visit our webpage, uh, for more information on how to provide comments through, through the end of the comment period. We do have another virtual public hearing this evening on Zoom at six PM. And that information in viewing link is also available on our webpage. Thank you all for attending today's, uh, virtual public meeting on the twenty twenty-three Bus and Rail Service and Fair Equity Analysis. We appreciate your time and feedback. The time is now one PM and the meeting is concluded. Thank you.